I'm a hardcover person. Yeah, I like to highlight.
Just turn the heat up. It's really a big song.
So you look right on. See, uh, that is so. It's like right past the hospital.
Yeah.
But I'll call you. I tried to go today. When I got here, I was.
I understand.
As far as.
It was Nick and I'm glad we went together. All three of us. It was not fun sharing with the others.
Okay, we're going to begin. All right, welcome back, everybody, to the continuation of the conditional use hearing for the construction of a convenience store with gas pumps at 929 South High Street, the Parkway Shopping Center in the C1 Commercial Zoning District. Um, before we open the hearing, we also have, excuse me, let's start with the pledge of allegiance. Okay, thank you very much. Before we open the hearing, we do have an item for public comment, and that's for any resident in attendance who would like to raise an issue that is not involved the conditional use hearing here tonight. Nothing, okay. So hearing done, um, we will open the hearing. I'll turn it over to our solicitor, Ms. Cam.
Thank you. So this is the third hearing that we're convening. We finished off on December 21st, 2023, and we continued it till tonight. Um, I do want to make note for the record that because of the change in the year and new supervisor being elected, um, Robin Stuntbek is obviously no longer sitting as a board supervisor, and I believe the applicant is consented to Nate Wolman as the new supervisor. He was in the audience listening. He has the transcripts and all the exhibits, but I just wanted the applicant to state on the record they have no objection to him participating in the decision.
Yes, that's correct. You have no objection to your transcript, transcripts, excuse me, and any more from the audience and, um, including all the application.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, we finished off, um, the applicant's case in chief, and we're going to now turn it over to see if there's any parties. I will go on the list of the parties, but I do think the township may have their witness that want to present. Is that accurate?
Uh, yes, we have two witnesses that we wanted to call on the township's behalf. Are you ready?
Yeah, whoever, I'm not sure who's doing that.
Uh, ma'am chair, the first, uh, witness for the township that I would like to call is the Township Traffic Engineer, Andy Parker, with the firm of McCormick Taylor.
Thanks. Andy, you're going to have to explain by the forecourt.
Sure.
Raise your right hand. You swear the testimony about the file be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God, so you're a friend.
Yes, I do. Uh, well, so, um, as a Township Traffic Engineer, we have, uh, I, I'm not going to go through and sort of re-present what the applicant has already presented, um, primarily happy to answer questions, but I'll just briefly kind of describe what we did. Uh, we did review the site plans, um, and we reviewed the traffic impact assessment that was submitted, uh, as part of the conditional use package, um, looking at both of those, uh, for, uh, traffic circulation, uh, capacity analysis, safety, pedestrian issues, um, internal site, uh, uh, circulation and connectivity, um, as well as the, uh, the traffic study primarily consisted of the site access intersection on High Street, the signalized access. Um, so we reviewed all of their, um, the study which was done in accordance with, uh, PENDOT TIS guidelines. Basically, they, uh, the study prepared by TPD, I would say, followed, um, the, the, uh, the accepted practice of traffic studies, um, in Pennsylvania. And so we reviewed that. We provided comments in the letter, um, asking for some revisions, some clarification. Uh, PENDOT also, uh, reviewed the TIS and other materials as part of their, uh, first submission for an HOP permit. Uh, we referenced PENDOT's comments as well in our letter. We basically did concur with, uh, PENDOT's comments, and we had a few of our own. Uh, and then also, uh, the Township Engineer and I, uh, met with their, the applicant team to go over some, uh, of the internal site layout, um, from their first submission and talked about some changes and improvements we wanted to see, uh, which resulted in a revised site layout design. Uh, that is essentially what we did. Uh, certainly, some of the concerns that were raised in the previous hearings, uh, are, are valid concerns. I'm happy to talk about, uh, whatever questions you have or things that I can focus on.
Okay, thank you very much. Does the board have any questions for Andy at this time?
Yeah, I'm happy to kick it off. So it's kind of three buckets in my mind, so maybe we can get the board to ask questions around the different buckets in order, so we can kind of focus on one topic at a time. So what I heard was, the traffic impact assessment that's been presented is one bucket. The methodology behind that, the calculations and the potential deterioration in the service level, um, that came out of that assessment. Uh, the second bucket was the internal circulation within the site itself and the movement of traffic, not only to the Wawa, but within the whole Parkway Shopping Center. Uh, third bucket was the intersection itself and the improvements that, uh, are required there and may be required by PENDOT and how those, uh, may or may not be adequate. And I guess there is a fourth bucket, which is the consideration of more than just the intersection, but High Street itself, the off ground from two or two bypass and the general flow of traffic in towards that intersection for both the north and south. So I'm going to ask a question related to the actual first bucket, which is the traffic impact assessment. In your letter, um, to the township, which was exhibit 10 in the, uh, just to make sure, T10, yes, traffic review letter dated November 7th, McCormick Taylor. In the traffic impact assessment review, uh, number nine on that list, you stated that the, the method used in the TIA to determine future movement volume should be revised, and as a result, future volumes and analysis should be revised as needed. Future volumes should be based on actual counts of existing traffic, tracking trips generated by portions of the shopping center that will be removed, and adding trips generated by the proposed Wawa, accounting for both internal capture of bypass trips, which we had a conversation about in one of the previous meetings. So you, it seems to me that you don't believe that the counts that have been used in the traffic impact assessment presented by the applicant are adequate. Could you explain why you believe that and what you would like to see different?
Uh, some of the methodology that they used to establish their future volumes, um, I thought wasn't, was not the best methodology. They, they had done traffic counts of the existing intersection, um, but when they went to, um, project their future volumes, they were using, um, ITE trip generation, um, projections for the existing shopping center, um, the portion of it to remain, and, um, I felt, I felt that as much as possible, existing real world traffic counts for this particular site should be used in that process, and obviously, part of the shopping center is going away, so it would have to account for removing a portion of those existing trips. Uh, but generally speaking, that's, that's what the comment was, was getting at.
So what about the, and this came up during the previous, um, hearings, what about the issue of mixing and matching the methodology? So this desire for actual traffic counts on the existing location versus using a national average calculation for a retail gas station as part of the calculation of the future volumes? What, do you believe that that is a reasonable approach, and wouldn't it be better to use some real world data of Wawa traffic in the Northeast versus some national average that blends all kinds of things into that number?
Uh, what I will say to that is the approach of using actual existing traffic counts of current conditions and using ITE trip generation for projecting trips of the proposed land use is the accepted practice. It's, it's the industry standard. It's what, uh, the PENDOT guidelines, um, dictate. Um, there are some cases, especially for, um, I would say, very unique land uses where that don't have a lot of supporting data in the ITE trip generation, where applicants may go to, uh, similar sites and collect data, um, and, and use that data for their proposed site, uh, projected trips. I'm not saying that that couldn't also be done for a Wawa, uh, but generally, the, the industry standard, the accepted practice is to use the ITE trip generation manual for those trip projections.
So in your professional opinion, do you believe that that approach, using a national average to calculate trip generation, is likely to undercount or overcount the real world of Wawa in the mid-Atlantic area?
I, I don't know. Um, I, I, anything I would say would just be speculation on that. Um, sometimes there are, uh, post-development studies that are done, um, where if there is a reason to, uh, you know, be concerned that the data might not be correct, uh, a traffic counts can be done after the development is open, and, um, additional mitigation could be implemented at that point. That would be an instance where you would, I guess, have an idea if the actual volume was higher or lower than the ITE trip generation, but generally speaking, again, um, for PENDOT and District 6 in particular, meaning the Philadelphia area, they, they use the trip generation manual calculations, um, for these types of uses, the, the convenience store with a gas station. I, I haven't seen, uh, instances that I can recall where, um, they were, at least, speaking for PENDOT, maybe individual townships have, but, uh, PENDOT, uh, procedures wouldn't have asked applicants to do the individual, uh, similar site counts. So I would just say, I don't know, to your first question, whether it would be higher or lower in this area.
Is, is it true that in the event of a post-development assessment of the actual traffic impact, any remediation of that effort is on the township at that point, not the applicant is no longer required to address the issue?
I think those can be conditions of approval, um, that are, are placed on the applicant. I would say that, uh, it is not very often that, um, that those, uh, post-development studies occur, and when they do, um, as far as whether or not there is additional mitigation required, is, uh, that's something that I don't know what the numbers are as far as how often that, that actually happens, but in my experience, that would be on the applicant, uh, that would be the applicant's responsibility to implement those mitigation, the additional mitigation.
So breaking my own rule of trying to focus on one thing at a time, just explore that a little bit further. If the, if that was the case, and the studies said, look, this needs an additional turning lane or whatever else, at that point, you know, the, the, the new Wawa's been built, the ability to put in a new turning lane or widen something or do something else seems not to be that feasible.
Right, I was, I'm sorry, go.
All right. So what would you comment on that?
Yeah, I would say that generally speaking, when I've seen those post-development studies used, it's, uh, usually not for things so large as adding turn lanes or, um, you know, changing the overall intersection configuration or signalizing a non-signalized intersection. It's usually for, uh, things such as changing the signal phasing or, um, potentially doing some turning movement restrictions, uh, by time of day, things like that. I'm not suggesting that, that that's something that should be relied on in this case, um, just something that, when you brought up, uh, whether or not, um, the numbers in the ITE manual would over-represent or under-represent the volumes for Northeast, it was just something that came to mind, that sometimes those post-development studies are done, and that's one way that, um, I have seen that for a site like this, that you would have an idea of whether or not the numbers were higher or lower than the ITE tip generation. Okay.
I have a question. Does the study take into account the volume can differ based on the nature of the business? You know, like, Wawa's a totally different business than Timothys, obviously. So, and it attracts people for food and gas a lot more than Timothys work, which is food and water in these cases. Um, so I'm just wondering if there's any account for the type of business that, from a traffic standpoint?
Yeah, so for the future trip projections, um, the ITE trip generation manual has over a hundred different types of individual land uses that are, um, with supporting data that have, uh, charts and equations that are used based on the number of gas pumps, based on the square footage of the site, uh, in, for that individual use. So yes, the trip generation for a Wawa is different than what it would be for a Timothys, um, and many, many other different types of individual land uses.
Okay, so that was taken into account in this instance?
Yes, it was.
Question for you. On your report that you gave to the township, when you gave to the township on, uh, November 7th, 2023, and the traffic comments in the plan review section, um.
You stole a tangent.
No, and the traffic impact, uh, future volumes should be based on actual counts of existing data. Do you stand by that statement?
Yeah, and that's, I do, and that's, uh, similar to the question Mr. Walsh asked, and.
I'm just following up on that.
Yes, I, I do believe that, uh, what I would be looking for, um, what I think should happen is a revised TIS to reflect the, the different volumes. I cannot say what the result of that would be, how much of a difference.
Well, nobody can, until you do.
In terms of volumes or, or level service, but, um, that, that's what I'm looking for by that comment. I believe the PENDOT letter had a, a similar, similar comment in there.
Well, that was my next question. In item seven of your letter, you talk about the, uh, that, that you generally concur with PENDOT's review comments, but instead of repeating all of them here, we've attached the PENDOT comment letter to the end of our review, and in the exhibit packet, I do not see that letter. So it should be part of this packet, should it not?
Uh, yes.
I'm asking, who put together the packet letter?
I put the exhibits together. I don't, I can get that for you. I probably don't know if I have it attached to the version I have. I credit what I have, so.
It's not attached to the packet.
Right, now I probably don't have it, but I'm saying I need to get that from Andy then, as the attachment.
So in that letter from PENDOT, item 14, they state, do not use ITE data to represent site traffic for land uses that are currently in operation, instead utilize the actual traffic data, which basically, you know, supports what your statement was.
Right, that, yes, that's similar to what I was.
So do you find that there's a, uh, the ITE, uh, the ITA that was presented to us from Wawa, do you find there's a deficiency there as far as giving us an accurate picture of what the actual traffic line's going to be if Wawa is allowed to build there?
What I think is that, um, I'm requesting revisiting the methodology used for the volumes. I don't know where that, what that will lead to. Um, I will say that it is typical that an applicant will submit a TIA and will get comments that requires revisions. Um, I honestly can't even think of, you know, it's extremely rare that the first version of the TIA would have no, no comments or revisions, um, from either the municipality or from PENDOT. So, uh, yes, the answer is, I, I think that the volumes should be revisited and most likely revised, uh, and the analysis updated, and I, I don't know what will happen from that point.
So your, your focus mainly though is on existing traffic count, from what I understand, is that correct? And what you just said, the comments you just said relate more to the existing situation than the proposed situation?
Right, I'm, I'm not saying that they need to change the projected trips that are associated with their land use. I'm saying that the turning movement volumes at the intersection should be based on existing volumes as opposed to, um, trying to, uh, use the ITE trip gener- trip generation manual for the remainder of the shopping center that's going to be, um, reduced in size.
I guess, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse here, but I just remain skeptical of everything I've heard to date, both from the applicant's traffic engineer and this kind of generally accepted approach that PENDOT uses around the proposed view use, using this national average data to calculate the impact on traffic volume. It just seems a flawed approach. I mean, I, I drove down to Maryland the other day, went past the Royal Farm, 16 pumps, there's one vehicle there fueling up. That's not the case when you drive past a Wawa in the West Ocean. So it's, the real world data is different, and I don't understand why, well, tell me if it's true, could we ask PENDOT to use more actual Wawa data in this region, um, to project the future traffic volumes so that we can calculate whether the service impact is an A to a B, which is what it says it is in this, this exhibit, or is it an A to a C or a D level of service that warrants bigger and better improvements at this intersection versus, we go in like this, the thing gets built, and four years down the road, it's like, wow, this wasn't adequate, it should have built something different there from the scratch. What, what's your opinion?
I, I would say, based on my years of reviewing these studies, that's what PENDOT does. They use the ITE trip generation manual for this type of site. I'm not, we could ask them, I, certainly, I don't know, I didn't, I can't, I have no idea what they would say.
I, I, this is probably just to the right color, but my personal view is Wawa has a business case to this site that involves an estimate of fuel, fuel volume, sales. They probably have a very clear ratio of, for every vehicle that comes in and fuels, there's 1.3 that come in and just go into the store. From those two basic numbers, you can probably calculate easily from their business case how many vehicles a day they expect to come into the shopping center. That should be the methodology. I'm sorry, but that's just my personal view for the right color.
And just to follow up on that, you, you already stated that you feel that the traffic impact should be revised. I mean, given the questionable nature of the traffic volume data, my question to you is, can this board find as a fact on the evidence following that improvements in streets and highways contingent to the applicant's property as part of the improvements for the prepared, uh, proposed conditional use development shall be sufficient to prevent adverse traffic impacts caused by the proposed site? I mean, do we have the data to be able to allow us to make an informed decision here?
I think for that, um, again, that, given where they are in the process, I, I don't think that there's a definitive answer as far as what their impacts will be until revisions are made. I do believe that, um, you know, this, they are, they have to follow the process through the township, through conditional use, if approved, through land development, they have to follow the PENDOT HOP process. So the required, um, mitigation of impacts, like, that, that will need to occur as part of the process. As far as the answering that question right now today, I, again, it's, it's tough to answer at this point, as far as are they doing enough to, you know, mitigate those, those impacts? I would say, based on the, uh, level service requirements and some other things that are in the conditional use, as it stands, it appears that they will meet those, those requirements.
That question, um, I guess we're trying to get to the point, the real traffic. I'm just wondering, I mean, I can ask this now, because Wawa wasn't up there, but if we could get information from Wawa, you obviously know how many twinkies you sell, like coffee, and how many, how much traffic you have, and based on your, probably through, two, through your gas tanks. Um, and you probably market the areas based off of that before you build, so that you know what your volume's going to be and how much traffic. Would we be able to get information from Wawa relative to what you anticipate the traffic flow to be as a result of, um, your market analysis?
I don't know, are we allowed to add?
I'm not, I'm asking.
These are just questions for the, the witness.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I think what she's going to respond, Debbie can respond, I think she's going to say, you'll do what your code requires, so.
Okay.
I think that's what she's going to tell you. Um, I have a question, though, that I think might help the board a little bit. I mean, is it even in this board's jurisdiction to determine what the improvements need to be to the PENDOT road? Isn't that the process that PENDOT's going to go through when they're dealing with the HOP?
PENDOT will determine what improvements are required.
Right, so I think, I think they're frustrated because they feel that the TIA doesn't have accurate information, but if the applicant is, goes back through the PENDOT process and revises that or addresses your comment, it's not this board that can tell them what they have to do High Street, it's PENDOT, correct?
PENDOT, and to some extent, uh, the township through the land development process.
But if, if the township through the land development process wanted them to put something more on High Street, it's ultimately PENDOT's call.
Yeah, yes, and there's often, uh, opportunities for the municipality and PENDOT to coordinate, to, um, discuss concerns. Um, PENDOT often wants to make sure that municipalities are heard, they, they, I shouldn't say often, they, they do want to make sure municipalities are heard. Um, they may not always require everything that the township may want, but I would say that it is certainly within the realm of possibilities to have a coordination meeting with PENDOT and, including the applicant as needed, to discuss the concerns, either at the site access, with the transportation impact study, with the, with the ramp, um, some of those things, you know, certainly could be discussed, and then, um, we'll see what PENDOT requires as well as, you know, sort of what the township, uh, would be asking for.
Would that be a condition then of approval tonight, of saying that we would have that meeting with PENDOT? That's part of your land development. Like, and you can always have the municipality be a party to that process through land development when they're getting their PENDOT permits. And I'm sorry, are, is the applicant required to, to, to address the, the revisions that you're suggesting, or is that a condition that needs to be discussed?
They are required to get the PENDOT permit to address the, the, the PENDOT comments. They are required to address, I, I believe they are required to address our, the municipality's comments that were in the, the letter that I prepared, um, whether that is happening now or, uh, happening at, through the land development process with, you know, the opportunity for additional revised comments. But again, there, I, I believe that the applicant will be revising their TIA, TIS, and submitting that to PENDOT and the municipality, um, with responses to the comments, and then we would re-review the updated material at that time.
And that, it is agreeable to addressing all the comments and the municipal's.
Okay, great, I think I did.
Just to take that a little bit further, so I understand what we just said. Just to take that a little bit further, so I understand what we just said there around the comments you've already made and an updated TIS, which is maybe some real updated real world data for the actual situation now. But I, I would suggest that the board consider that the, Pendott has said Pendott will consider any comments or recommendations from the municipal or county reviews prior to approving the access permit. I would suggest that we have an opportunity, and maybe it will fall again on deaf ears, to say, we don't like the use of, the projected, the projected use using the ITE data, and it would be more, it would be better for all parties to have a real assessment of what traffic volumes will occur in the future by using something different to do the calculation. They may say, sorry, we use our methodology, tough, but at least we'll have answered the question about getting something better than what is currently on track to be used. Do you agree?
I would suggest that as something that, that Pendott should, should look at. I'm not prepared right now to say that that would be the best idea or not. I, I don't know. As far as like requiring that to happen, again, just, and I may be relying on my experience and how it is typically done for this type of land use. So I, I don't want to necessarily say that's the only way, but I do want to say that that's the, has been the accepted standard way of, of doing things for projecting the trips for this type of land use. Again, I hear what you're saying, and I think more data is always good. You could get, you could get the, the data from the local sites, you could compare it to the ITE trip generation manual, see which is more, you know, which, which yields a higher volume and say, well, let's do a sensitivity analysis of the two different methodologies. That's a possibility. I, I don't know, again, no idea what impact that would have as far as affecting the results of the study, but that is something I would say that we could ask Pendott. And even if Pendott didn't want to do it, the township can ask the applicant. I don't know if that could be a requirement or not through the process, but that is something that the township, township could ask the applicant to provide additional supporting data.
I have a question. In your opinion, the traffic study that was done on the days of the week it was done and the time of the year, do you feel that that's an accurate picture of the true volume, traffic is going to be generated at that location?
I think it is reasonable and acceptable. I don't know that it's the highest, you know, existing volume time of the year. That, as, as I recall, and I know from their testimony, they did count on a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then they did June and October.
That's, that's the correct way to do it. They counted during the morning peak period, the afternoon peak period. Everything, again, when I reviewed the study, I found those things to be acceptable, the, the methodology they used, other than the things that I commented on. So I did feel that that was okay. I know there's, there was some question about when that was done, I believe it was March 2022, you know, it, at that time, there was a certain amount of time after March 2020 that you could, that, that traffic counts were not accepted. You had to go back and use older traffic counts, or if you did new traffic counts, you had to apply adjustment factors to those volumes to account for lower volumes on the road due to COVID. There was a certain point, I want to say it was in mid 2021 or late 2021, where that sort of requirement, at least from the Pendott standpoint, because, you know, any municipality could do something different, but from the Pendott standpoint, which was kind of what they were operating under, they no longer had to make that adjustment after, you know, that date in late 2021. So the counts for March 2020 were acceptable. I, I think that they were acceptable. Again, you could count March 2022 versus, you know, tomorrow, and the numbers would be different. You could count, you know, yesterday versus tomorrow, the numbers would be different. But that's the way that the traffic studies are done. You do traffic counts, intersection turning movement counts on one day, and that's the basis for the existing conditions analysis.
All right, so what we're, what we're saying tonight is more data is always good. What you're suggesting is that the applicant revisit this intersection and do a different kind of study to take real world data and incorporate that into their traffic assessment?
Yeah, I think they already have the, the counts from the traffic study. It's just how they projected their future volumes to use that actual data as opposed to some trip generation projections. But go ahead.
Okay, and no, I guess my question is, how do we get, what actions do we need to take as a board tonight to make, to ensure that that is, is the direction we're adding in, that we're addressing the future, the more accurate future projections of traffic counts in that intersection?
Krista, I don't know.
Oh, I mean, that's. That's really part of the land development process. That, that permitting and the impact upon a land development plan is really not part of the conditional use necessarily. So Mr. Parker has given you the opinion that he thinks they met the criteria in the conditional use as far as relates to traffic. So that was, that's the focus of the conditional use comment. So if he believes that at the further stages, more analysis needs to be done, or things need to be tweaked, that's something that has to be done through that process.
So you believe that they've met the conditional use requirements for this?
Given that they would need to mitigate impacts to satisfy Pendott and the township in that coordination process, yeah, I, I, yes, I believe that the standards for conditional use appear to be met. Again, there are conditions I would say on that as far as, you know, if the revised traffic study shows drastically different results, not something that I'd expect, but if that were to happen, then the conditions of conditional use, it, they may not necessarily meet the level of service standards as is, but they will have to meet the required mitigation by Pendott and by the township, which would include those level of service standards.
So, so, and so they meet the conditional use requirements as of now?
Yeah.
And then through land development, or later on, we go back and they look at the projections and it changes, and they no longer meet the conditional use requirements. You're saying there's still a process by which Pendott and the municipality work with the applicant to correct that and adjust that? We would have to, you know, for example, have another conditional use hearing to correct that, or?
No, I, right, no.
No, the hearing, the hearing would be closed and you would render your decision. But to the extent that there are changes in their traffic impact study that they address through the Pendott permitting process, that permitting process and also the township land development process could require additional improvements to be made.
Okay.
So Pendott is willing to work with us?
Are there any other questions?
Go ahead. Congratulations. Beginning of your letter, it just said to the township, which also cited the Pendott letter. In the Pendott letter, item number 20, it states that the Wawa should provide a crash analysis for the proposed study intersections as well as the roadway segment in front of the site. Do you agree with that situation?
Yes, yes, I do.
Now, in the TIA which Wawa presented to us, they gave a crash analysis. And according to that Pendott report of the crash data, they found that there's no need to make any changes at that intersection because there weren't sufficient number of crashes occurring within a certain time period. Can you explain a little bit about what that, what that criteria is?
Yes, so that is, I believe, that crash data that was presented in the, in the TIS was specifically for the signalized intersection of the shopping center entrance and High Street. It wasn't clear in the TIS how far away from the intersection were the limits of that crash data, but I believe it was pretty much at that intersection. Criteria that would require mitigation from a crash standpoint is typically if there are five or more reportable crashes in one year that could be mitigated through some change to the intersection or the traffic controls as they are. So generally, the standard is five or more crashes in one year.
And 12 consecutive months?
12 consecutive months, correct. I, I know their data showed fewer than that for, for each year for that intersection. But I would agree that an expanded crash data, or expanded area for crash data along the entire frontage would be a helpful thing as well.
You say helpful, you say, what do you mean helpful? It says something that should be required. I mean, again, we're trying to put together data to be able to make a decision as to whether this would negatively impact the safety and health of the community. So again, without that data, how are we able to make an intelligent decision?
Right, I mean, it's something that they need to provide to satisfy the Pendott comments, to satisfy the township's comments at this point.
So the, the TIA data which they have here only has one point in space, which is that intersection, which they accumulated the traffic, crash data. How far beyond that intersection do you think would be appropriate for crash data to be considered?
I, I would say along the site frontage, potentially also including where the ramp comes in. I, I don't think other intersections up and down High Street are, would be necessary beyond the site frontage.
Certainly between the, the operator 202 up to the intersection and on the frontage of that site beyond that, should something be included within the consideration for crash data?
Yeah, I think that would be reasonable. And, and I would just remind, I guess, that the crash data is often, the, the, what's in that table is just the reportable crashes. There are sometimes, and what I believe may happen with the ramp often is low speed, at the end of the ramp, like a low speed rear end that may not be a reportable crash. So some of that data wouldn't necessarily be included, but the reportable data that reported by police force.
Mr. Lenny, do you think that would be reportedly should be included?
Uh, yes, yes.
During the last meeting, some of the residents were talking about not being able to make left or right hand turns out of their neighborhoods onto High Street. Would any part of the study look into that, or would there be any discussion with Pendott about additional signalized intersections?
That is definitely something that I would say is a, is a concern and something that I would want to bring up in a meeting with Pendott to see what they would want to do there. Basically, if you're talking about the, the roads right across the street of Lexington and Yorktown, there wouldn't be an, an additional traffic signal. It's too close to the main one, and I don't think those roads hit High Street at a place where, I, I would say, I don't, I don't know, but I don't think that they would be tied into the same traffic signal because it would be a very large footprint for, for a traffic signal there. That said, certainly there's some options, there's, there's ways to potentially help the access in and out, whether that's through signing and pavement markings to kind of try to keep the space clear in front of those access points. Potentially looking at, and I know this wasn't, it's not something that I'm suggesting, I'm just saying as a possibility, looking at maybe doing one way, like a one-way loop instead of both, both streets having sort of a two-way access. So, yes, I, it's something that I would say I'm concerned about, and it's something that affects them today, and that in coordination with Pendott, perhaps there are some ways to help them out.
Sean, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I got you.
Yes, it's actually a different, well, I guess it's part of the same subject here. The, you know, there's been information being presented, and I think even Pendott referenced it, about the, the volume or truck access or something else relative to the 202 off-ramp that merges onto High Street. And again, you know, it's a concern that if we underestimate traffic volumes, that this, that, that particular intersection will experience a deterioration in safety potentially. You know, we have heard people, residents describe how it already backs up in the morning for access, folks trying to go to the McDonald's.
You mean backs up on the ramp?
On the ramp, yeah. And then, you know, Wawa described the fact that, you know, so there is new volume, new trip volume generated from bypass traffic now, using that ability to get off 202, get something, then get back on 202 south. So my question really is, what would be the safest type of design for that off-ramp in the event that traffic volumes are higher than the kind of analysis that's been done today? Would a separate dedicated turn lane into the Parkway Shopping Center increase safety or actually be detrimental to safety?
I, I can't definitively answer that. I would say that there are challenges to doing that because of the grade difference coming off the ramp and getting down into the parking lot. If you're talking about right where the ramp meets High Street, where the grade difference isn't as, 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 as much, that could be a possibility. I, I think I would be unsure what Pendott would think about that. But I think there are, as far as whether or not it's improves or the safety or not, again, I, I don't have a definitive answer for that. It may help some things and may cause some unintended consequences as well.
So in the event that nothing is done and the traffic volume is high to get off 202 south there, and traffic does back up onto that flow of traffic that's, can be high speed two lanes down to one to merge off the bypass there onto 202 south, I mean, will Pendott assess that? Will they look at the impact of, or are they just going to use these basic numbers from a TIA, the fact that there's nothing, that the off-ramp isn't part of the intersection to get into the shopping center, and we've been, again, we're left with a problem that now hopefully Pendott would have to address because they, the traffic causing a safety issue by backing up onto 202. Do you see that as potentially an outcome of this?
Potentially. I would say that if it's looking at the capacity and the congestion of that, on that ramp, potential congestion on the ramp, wasn't part of the traffic study, it's not something that Pendott initially asked them to look at. I think that that could be something that comes out of the coordination in terms of looking at that backup on the ramp and, again, potentially revising, some of the things that were talked about in the previous hearing would be potentially revising their trip generate, or, sorry, their trip distribution in terms of, you know, pulling more of the site generated traffic as traffic coming off of 202 and then getting back onto 202. Right now, we just know that from the distribution, it, they have a percentage of their site traffic that comes northbound on High Street, but it doesn't distinguish whether that's coming all the way up High Street or, or if that is traffic that's coming off the ramp as well. And so, yes, that is potentially something that could be looked at by Pendott, but it hasn't been to date. Or, I will also add though, and, and this may have been mentioned earlier, one of Pendott's comments was that they were asking the applicant to evaluate the alignment of that ramp. So whether that be some sort of a slip right into the site, as you said, or whether that be trying to pull the ramp back further away from the signal, that is something that Pendott asked them to evaluate. I, I don't know where that stands or what the feasibility of that is because I know there's a, a pretty significant, there are challenges as far as the grade coming down the ramp. If you were to say, try to straighten out the ramp, it's a, it's a pretty big drop down to High Street. So I don't know feasibility wise, but it is something Pendott asked them to, to evaluate and I think wants to coordinate with them on further.
I have a question, kind of going back to John's statement was relative to crashes that occur in the data that you gather as a result of the crashes. You say reportable crashes. Could you give me a definition of what reportable crashes are? Like if there's a fender bender, the police were called, would that be, you know, reportable?
It's correct, it's, yeah, crashes reported by the police. I just wanted, I don't know the definition off the top of my head, but I think it may be in.
So I guess the question is.
It may be in the TIS, I'm just looking to see.
So if the police were called, then that's. Okay, so if the police were called, then that's reportable?
Right. Let me just, I'll read the definition of a reportable crash, this is from their TIS. A reportable crash is one in which an injury or fatality occurs, or if at least one of the vehicles involved requires towing from the scene. So not necessarily just did the police show up and know about it, but also it had to have been either an injury or a vehicle needed to be towed from the scene.
Okay, so if somebody hit somebody coming out of the parking lot, there's some that could not be part of this study. So there could be some crashes, so to speak, reportable crashes, quote, that are not reported as part of the study because of that definition you just read.
Right, and there, sometimes you will see overall numbers where it's reportable and unreportable crashes, and then, but the PENDOT criteria for mitigation, where I talked about five or more crashes in a 12-month period, that is specifically for reportable crashes that were of a type that could be mitigated by some change.
Okay, so I guess it's an accurate statement to say that the data we have currently is not as accurate as it could be relative to how many reportable crashes, or should.
I wouldn't say not, well, again, if we're only talking about that one intersection, I believe the reportable crash data is accurate. But there are, there could be, and I believe there are probably, unreported crashes that are not included in the model that was in the TIS. And again, it doesn't go, I'm not sure how far out the data goes beyond that intersection.
Okay, so there's some flaws in the data, so to speak, for us to be able to know.
I would say some additional data would be beneficial to review. I don't know that there's inaccuracies with what's been provided, but just it's limited.
Okay, thank you.
Another question for me. My understanding is there's a school bus stop on South High Street between Lexington and Yorktown, which is kind of in the vicinity of this intersection and where this traffic volume is increasing. What obligations are there on the applicant and the traffic review and PENDOT to understand that, make sure it does not become a more, you know, safety for the school is not impacted by this redevelopment?
I'm not sure what the obligations are. Clearly, if the bus stops and has its lights on, you know, it is, the drivers have to stop and it's, police would need to enforce that. As far as trying to be proactive and, you know, highlight that as a safety concern, again, that's something that could be part of the discussions with PENDOT to see if they want to do anything further through, whether it be additional signing or pavement markings or moving, potentially moving the school bus stop or rerouting the school bus. Obviously, the school district would be involved in that conversation as well. But at this point, I'm not sure what necessarily the obligation is right now, that would be a further discussion, I don't believe.
Couple of other questions. One is, is it correct, I think the applicant stated this, that the drainage on the, on High Street is addressed as part of the review by PENDOT looking at this intersection? Is that true?
It's part of the, it is part of the HOP, yes. Their HOP plans would include drainage and, I believe, a drainage report as well, not just the plans, but a report. So yes.
Okay. Second question is, I believe you identified in your report, and I think the applicant has agreed to look at this more closely, is that the left turn into the Parkway Shopping Center off High Street, that turning lane length needed to be larger? Calculations, and the applicant originally said it's not sure, it could be down, but I think subsequently that's been agreed to be something that will be addressed?
Yes, I believe they said that. And yet, right, I, my comment was that the turn lane should be extended, and I believe the possibility of, there is a, you could extend it further north, I can't remember the name of the street, you know, off the top of the screen, but there's room there to extend the sound of left turn.
So to the circulation within the Parkway Shopping Center itself, I know you worked with the applicant and staff to come up with a revision that included that more extended guiding channel.
Yeah, that's.
The home way in and out of the actual Wawa facility. My question relates to the rest of the lot, the fact there are no changes to that parking area in front of remaining stores. Do you feel that that is an adequate approach to ensure safety, given the increased volumes in general between Wawa, the McDonald's, and vehicles trying to access those properties? That there's no change proposed, and it's just basically essentially an open parking area that's got striping?
Right. I'm not clear on what the obligations of the Wawa applicant are to modify that portion of the shopping center parking area. I will say that in our conversations, myself, the township engineer, and the applicant team designer and traffic engineer, we did try to clean up and sort of delineate some of the lanes and the turning movements. It's a little closer to the McDonald's side and closer to that sort of intersection right in the middle of the site where the egress from the Wawa would come out. We did try to make that something that we thought would work as well as possible. There wasn't a lot of focus, though, I will say, on that back sort of top-right portion of the site, and I don't know if that is something that needs to be, should be, can be, you know, modified by the applicant, but that's kind of what, yeah, that's, we didn't focus on that as a required or recommended change at this time in that back portion of the site.
Now, one last question on the internal circulation. Do you think it is safe for a vehicle that enters the shopping center and wants to go to McDonald's and park on that south side of the building to take that left turn across the exiting traffic?
Yeah, that's something that I think when we initially came up with this design is probably, wasn't a large point of focus, and it's something that, as I've thought about it, I don't, I don't know what the, what a better solution would be off the top of my head, but it's something I think that we might want to revisit because that is the one sort of movement or destination, if you will, that's sort of not as well-served as some of the others. If you, for example, if you were going to the McDonald's drive-thru, you know, you enter the site, you kind of go down the long driveway past the Wawa entrance, you make a left at the end of that driveway median, and you get to the drive-thru. But to get to those parking spaces on the south side, you essentially sort of have to make a left-hand U-turn, and I don't know if that's necessarily the best, it might be still the best overall solution. Because I will say that I don't, I don't think that there will be a heavy constant flow of traffic sort of coming out of the back part of the site, so those people making that left may not be forced to sort of wait for a very long time to be able to make a left. Also, potentially, it is possible that you could put a stop sign for that traffic that's coming out of the back of the site to have to stop at that internal intersection, which would give gaps for people to make a left turn to go up towards McDonald's. But that's something, essentially what I'm saying is, that's something that maybe could be revisited as we move forward through the land development process.
Yeah, I mean, my concern would be that the traffic exiting the Wawa from that one exit that they have on the east side there, wanting to get into a queuing lane to get out through the traffic light, and then you've got that incoming vehicle that wants to turn left, either the U-turn or to get into the drive-through lane, and you just see conflict there.
Right. Now, that, the traffic coming out of Wawa will have a stop condition, so they will have to stop, and anybody entering the site, whether they're going straight to the back part or making a left onto McDonald's, the traffic exiting the Wawa would have to allow them, those other drivers to go first.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Parker?
If not, I have a few, but not many, short some of it.
Is that any?
Okay. And thank you.
Debbie, do you have a microphone?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
No.
No.
Yep.
Yes, okay. And thank you, answered, you actually answered most of the questions on my list, so this should be pretty short. Thank you for explaining to the board the difference between the reportable crash versus a non-reportable crash. Can you also explain what a reportable correctable crash is? I think you used the word mitigation.
Right, yeah, and again, probably don't have the word-for-word definition, but it needs to be, so PENDOT would require mitigation based on crashes, if there are five or more crashes over a 12-month period that are correctable by a, by changing, by doing some sort of improvements. Sort of non-correctable crashes could be things like driver distraction, if, like, if you had six or seven crashes, but three of them were, you know, specifically due to weather or distracted driving or things like that, those aren't necessarily correctable by specific physical improvements.
So is it correct, like a DUI would not be a correctable crash, right?
Correct, right.
You can't correct stupidity, right?
Right.
And then PENDOT defines what the roadway segment is for purposes of the crash data, correct?
They do, and, but, yes, they do, and I'm not sure off the top of my head what data was used in the TIS. I, my thought, my belief was that it was specifically for the signalized intersection, but I don't know how far out it went.
And I think you said earlier in your testimony that it's common practice to submit an initial traffic study like TPT did, and then for PENDOT to provide review comments, and then it's sort of like this, you resubmit and you provide additional information. It doesn't mean the report's flawed, it just means that PENDOT's requesting either to expand what they initially wanted or for additional information, correct?
Correct.
And I just want to be clear, and I think we are, I know there was a lot of questions that the board members had regarding the ITE. You're in agreement that the methodology used to determine the trip generation for the proposed Wawa is based on a typical standard industry practice, correct?
Yes.
So it's the, it's the under comment nine of your letter that you were suggesting with respect to the rest of the shopping center?
Yes, yeah. So generally speaking, if there is an existing site that you can pull data from, you know, at your specific location, that's what you're going to use. If you were proposing something new, such as the Wawa, that's when you use the ITE for generation.
And it's your understanding the applicant has agreed to comply with that comment nine of your letter as well as all the comments in your letter, correct?
That's what you said earlier, so yes.
And do you think the appropriate time to address that comment specifically nine is at the time of the PENDOT resubmission?
Well, I would hope that the applicant would resubmit to PENDOT and the municipality at the same time.
Exactly, yes.
Yes.
Then the township will be involved in that process, obviously, should this proceed with the PENDOT, correct?
Yes, we would, we would continue to be involved.
You mentioned, and I know some of the board members asked you about the various recommendations that you had made in conjunction with meeting with the applicant's attorney to address some of the internal circulation concerns that were originally raised by the planning commission. And I believe those items were summarized under your comment number one of your review letter from your November 7, 2023 review letter, correct?
Yes.
And I know you were present at the various hearings and you heard the testimony from the consultants. Would you agree that the applicant incorporated those comments into its alternative conditional use plan that was submitted as Exhibit A 14?
Yes, they did. There may be a few, and I apologize, I don't have that letter right in front of me, there may be a couple of comments toward the tail end that still needed some revision, but the majority of them, if not all of them, were addressed in that revised site plan that's up on the screen.
And then obviously, a number of the other comments that we discussed this evening relate to the HOP process and will be addressed in conjunction with PENDOT review and also in conjunction with the township participation at the appropriate time, correct?
Yes, that's what I understand.
And do you believe that the recommendations that you suggested to the internal site configuration will provide for an improvement over the existing conditions and are adequate for circulation for the users of that center?
I would say I can't necessarily say that about the existing condition because it is a major change. I don't know if I can say it's overall better or worse than existing, but it is, I'm sorry, what was the second part of your question?
That it would be an improvement over the existing conditions and adequate for circulation of the users.
I do believe that it would be adequate for circulation of the users, including the pedestrians, and again, there may still be revisions that come out through the land development process, but yes.
That's all the questions I have, thank you.
So just on that last question, when she said the users, you're specifically talking about the Wawa users because you said you didn't really focus on the rear parking lot.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, because I mean, I view it as, as far as the conditional use standards, they're putting a Wawa where there is a overall, they're plopping it into the middle of an existing shopping center, so I feel like that should have been studied and examined, my personal opinion. I have a question about that site plan that's up there, which is Exhibit A 15. The first access coming into the Wawa, is that, can you go both right and left out of that, or you can, you can't go left, you can only go right, right? Okay.
When, would you mean when you get into, like, by the gas pumps?
I can't explain well.
The first entrance into this, yes.
You can only go right out, correct?
If you can go right into Wawa at the first access, there's no exiting from the Wawa parcel onto the driveway there. The only exit is what he said.
Brian, point to the first one. So that's right in only?
Correct, right in only.
Okay, the second one, now go to the second one. Is that right in, right out, that full access?
That's full movement in and out, yes.
Is that where you said, because I was confused, you said something about them putting a stop sign?
What I was saying is.
To answer Sean's question about being concerned about the traffic, trying to get to the parking spot and kind of, where were you talking about putting a stop sign?
What I was saying is, if you were coming out of the back portion of the site to the right, Brian, is that Brian, yes, so if you're coming out of the back portion of the site heading toward the signal, potentially you could put a stop sign right there to stop that traffic coming out, and that would allow the lefts in to the McDonald's.
So there's already going to be a stop sign at the second?
At the McDonald's, yeah.
There's a stop, yeah, there's a stop sign coming out of the Wawa.
Right. So how do you deal with people coming off of High Street that turned into this and want to go left to get to McDonald's? Is there, would you put a stop sign, like, before you would turn left to get to the McDonald's, like, right there?
That's what we're talking about. So to get to the McDonald's, if you wanted to go to the drive-thru or around the back of the McDonald's, you would just simply make a left.
You have to handy show that with the point of work, because I'm not understanding how it works, and I agree with Sean, that seems very dangerous.
I'm going a different color. So coming in, those, the traffic would make a left to go up to the drive-thru or behind McDonald's.
But how do they make that left if there's a person coming out of the Wawa trying to also turn left? How is the person sitting at that stop sign going to know what that person's going to do?
They don't necessarily know what they're going to do other than if they were using a turn signal, but that's, I would say that's kind of a standard, like, if a car is approaching, the car coming out of the Wawa is.
Has to wait.
Drive out in front of the car, they have to stop, you know, they would be at fault for pulling out in front of something. But the, yeah, so the traffic coming in, making a left to the McDonald's. The concern was, and this is again something that we revisit, if somebody wanted to come in and specifically park in this row of parking spaces, it's, you know, it's a little awkward because they sort of just kind of make a U-turn around the end of the painted island there. But there should be no issue with if they wanted to go to the drive-thru or back and park in this part of the McDonald's site.
This has raised another question in mind. So if you're turning into the Parkway Shopping Center, right there, either one of the, either the right-hand only in or the other one in off coming south on High Street, what's to stop someone trying to cut across the exit lanes to get to those parking spots? Is that curbing raised there?
This is an existing raised concrete, and this is a proposed raised concrete.
So only different colors, it's existing?
Right.
All right, thank you.
And then at this point, up until this portion of it is painted, as shown on the site plan. Again, those are details that could change the, the area. Again, those are details that could change the area in there, but go ahead.
I have another question. So looking at A 15, do you see any issue with trucks, delivery trucks, getting to the back of the existing shopping center that's going to remain? They look like they have to come into the Wawa area to get to the back. Do you see that being a concern?
Yeah, potentially. I know they provided truck turning templates that showed it could work because, you know, a truck can come in here, go around. Uh, yeah.
Well, I'm not saying whether a truck can physically do it, but does it create a conflict in an already very busy parking lot?
It may. Wawa can speak to, and I think they may have spoken to, like the times of when those large trucks would be here. But if you're talking about trucks that are serving sort of the rear of the shopping center?
Yeah.
That, yeah, that could be something that, that could be a concern that will need to be addressed. Whether, you know, the route that they take to get to and from that area, or the time of day, I would think those could be things that need to be looked at and potentially have those conditions.
Okay. I have other questions.
I have one last question, sorry about this.
No problem.
I think in your report, you mentioned a concern about the amount of parking that is actually the rear of the Wawa, and that there's no rear exit. So is it true that maybe there is a safety hazard for pedestrians wanting to use the Wawa by the fact that their parking, majority of the parking is actually to the side and rear of the building?
I would say potentially. What we're talking about is, you can see it on this one. You know, there are, there's a lot of parking for Wawa that's on this side of the store. There are no doors for the Wawa on that side facing those parking spaces. Essentially, anybody that's, you know, parking there would have to come around the sidewalk and go to the front of the store. It's not, it's not the end of the world, but it is something that, you know, ideally, there will be an entrance on that side of the building for easier access for those people.
I will say that, just for the record, that is odd because I feel like a lot of the other designs of Wawa that I see have entrances on both the front and the back.
I could just respond. We went to the zoning hearing board to do a building with a double entrance, and we were denied. So that's why, we think it would be a better store as well.
You weren't denied for a double entrance, you were denied for the side of the store. So you made a business decision that your store needed to have X, Y, and Z inside it, and that, and you couldn't have a rear entrance, correct?
It didn't work with the building.
It didn't work because you couldn't get the amenities in the building that you wanted and have a rear access. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Parker? Is it not, are we able to give the parties a chance to ask questions at this point?
Yeah, if the parties have, I'm going to go down the list. Mr. Dial, do you have any questions for this witness? Yes? Okay, she'll give you the microphone then.
Yeah, my name is Javier. I'm from Las Vegas. Do you know how many trip counts there will be daily?
Can you put the microphone close to the chair now, the board working here?
Do you know how many trips count will be every day?
How many trips there will be every day? I can look in the TIS to see, I believe that information is in there. On a daily, daily trips. So I can say, it's attributed to the Wawa.
It's 9,425.
9,425, I see, yes. 9,425 for the entire shopping center on a weekday, yes. And that's, that's the amount of, each car entering and exiting is two trips. One entering, one exiting, so yes, that, their data shows 9,425.
Do you know how many trip count on South High Street?
On an average daily, it is 16,618.
Now tell me that 233 feet street is adequate for that 9,425 trip count?
Two, I'm sorry, 233 what?
That shared street where that all the traffic will go.
You mean the driveway?
Not the driveway, the 200.
The turning lane?
Not the turning lane. This lane from there to there is 233?
The driveway, oh, 233 feet of that driveway? I get, so the...
That can handle 9,425 vehicles?
Right, so their analysis is based on the peak hours and the analysis software, and the way that the methodology works is, one of the analysis results shows what the queue lengths will be during those peak hours. Their data showed that the queue lengths would, and this is called the 95th percentile queue, so 95% of the time during that peak hour, the queue length would be, I believe it was 135 feet or less. Again, based on the analysis that was provided so far, which we have asked them to revisit and revise. But yeah, in my opinion, the queuing coming out of the site will likely be able to be accommodated in that driveway.
And another question. From 9,000, usually in that, in that area, from 8:00 to 6:00 in the morning, there is no business. So from 9,400, usually 15% business, we have. From 9,225, we might have, I mean, 84 something trip count. And peak hours, whatever show on here, 600 something doesn't look right. There should be that more than 800 or 900. I don't agree with that, trip count on the peak hours.
Okay.
What do you say about?
I say that they followed the methodology and the equations of the trip generation manual that is used as the industry standard for this. It may be higher, it may be lower for individual sites. But that, the number that's in their study as far as the overall trip generation for the site is reasonable, or I believe that's correct based on the methodology that is used. We did ask them to look at the existing count data and use that as opposed to projecting the trips for the remaining shopping center portion of the site. So that number may change slightly, or I shouldn't say slightly, that number may change. But I think that that is correct based on the methodology used.
Because 8,000 trip count in 14 hours. 8,011.
Right.
Trip count will be in 14 hours.
In 14 hours?
Yes.
What do you mean by that?
9,425, but 15% business is usually from 8:00 to 6:00 a.m. And then left 14 hours, that will be 8,011 vehicle in 14 hours.
So that's a question.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not.
Do you think? 14 hours, because from 8:00 to 6:00 in the morning, not too much business.
Eight, you mean 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m.?
8:00 p.m.
Oh, oh, 8:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., correct, okay. Sure, now I understand your 14 hours.
No business.
Okay.
And 15%, you can say, well, because Wawa will be there. Another trip count 15%, hey? After deducting that, trip count left 8,011 in 14 hours. Do you understand what I want to say?
I understand what you're, what you're saying, yes.
So peak hour, peak hour here, you said. Peak hour you said is here 675.
In the AM peak hour, yes, they're saying 675 trips, correct.
But average will be more, around there, 570, average will be there. 8,011 vehicle trip count in 14 hours. So peak hours will be, will be more than that.
Do you have a question?
My question is, this report is not right.
That's not.
A question though, sir. He's already told you that they, he believes they follow the accepted methodology. In your case in chief, when you present evidence, if you believe, you can present that to the board, but he's already told you that he believes that they follow the appropriate methodology. So you can only really ask him questions, not get him to testify for you.
No questions.
Okay. Are there any other parties that wish to ask this witness question? So please come forward and state your name.
Can I just stay right here?
That's fine, but please use the microphone to state your name again to the court recorder.
Sure. Jill Devaney, 930 South High Street. How familiar are you with South High Street as far as the volume of traffic?
I'm not sure what you mean. We have the data, and I'm familiar with driving up and down the road. I don't live right here, but I've driven here, and we have the data from the report, so.
Okay. Were you able to physically go out there and, and see the times, 7:00 a.m. for instance, and see the backup on the off-ramp of 202, if you're coming?
I have been there at that time of day before, yes.
Okay. Are you also familiar with the fact that we have excessive speeding most daily on that road as well?
I don't know that for sure, but I understand.
Okay. So I guess my question is, right now, we have half a shopping center and a McDonald's. And we do have Timothys, but it has limited hours. It's definitely not a 24/7. In your opinion, adding a Wawa that's going to be open 24/7, and a gas station that's going to be available 24/7, do you feel that that is going to add an excessive amount of noise and traffic and potential additional speeding issues for the residents on South High Street?
I would say that it is going to add traffic, it is going to add noise. Excessive, I can't say if it would be excessive or not. But, and speeding, again, I would only be speculating, more traffic, more speeding or not. But yes, they're going to add traffic. They're going to, by the nature of their business, there will be noise. And it is up to them to mitigate their impacts as required by either the township or PennDOT, according to the code and PennDOT standards, to, you know, the satisfaction of those agencies.
But I guess my question is for you, seeing that street, South High Street, and all the homes that line South High Street, from as north as Rosedale to as south as the Overpass, all those homes, do you feel, in your opinion, that this would be excessive traffic and noise for all of us regarding a 24/7 facility like this?
I can't speak for your, I can't, I can't speak for what individual residents' opinions would be. I can just say that.
I just wanted your opinion.
There will be additional traffic, there will be additional noise. I don't live right there, so I don't know exactly what it feels like to live there today and what the, what the change would be.
So my final question is, looking at the map or the design, my concern is, we already have a McDonald's, we already have half of a shopping center. On a Saturday, are you aware that there are tractor-trailers that come in and go straight, and they park in front of Colonial? They do not go in the back, ever, to deliver. Do you feel with the way that this is going to be taking a significant amount of entryway? It's very defined and, do you feel?
What part are you talking about?
So when you come in the shopping center right now, you go all the way to the back to Colonial Village, which is at the end. Those tractor-trailers come down, and they turn around, and then they back in right in front of Colonial, and they're facing the drive-through for McDonald's. That's not going to change. So my concern is, looking at this tonight, I heard what you said about folks coming in and wanting to make that left-hand turn. I guess my, my question to you is, are you aware that those trucks, tractor-trailers, come in and deliver like that?
I am not, no, I would say I'm not specifically aware of that issue. I don't know if Brian potentially was.
Yeah, I have pictures, I'm happy, you know, if we need to see those. But I guess what I'll end with, with the question to you is, I'm not sure that we are very familiar, and you've said yourself, you've only been there a few times. But my concern is, is the current activity, I'm not sure we're taking into consideration the current activity. I think it's important to realize McDonald's is very popular, Colonial, very popular. Get your bagels on a Saturday, it's, all those spots in the back are filled.
Right.
So I guess my question to you is, I would, do you feel like there needs to be additional observations of how busy that back area gets in addition to the McDonald's in seeing the current ramp? I don't know how that would be possible, all those cars. They would be backed out onto the South High Street.
What would be backed out onto South High, if?
The traffic. It's...
Entering the site?
Yes, sir. On a Saturday, it is between Country Bagel, the UPS Store, Colonial, and McDonald's. It's very busy.
And they're being stopped, like what is the point that the entering traffic would be stopped and?
I guess my concern is if folks...
Because they're not, they're not forced to stop like on that driveway.
They won't be able to get in because people will be slowing down to get into the Wawa, to get into the gas station. But the regular activity that's currently happening, which I think we're kind of forgetting about, we're worrying about the pizza and all the things at the Wawa, but we need to remember there's still a half of a shopping center.
Sure.
And there's still a McDonald's. My concern is, that's a large volume on a Saturday. I just sat and actually observed it last Saturday. I'm just trying to figure out how, if you're coming in to that tiny little, very narrow entranceway, and you have folks wanting to make the left to go to McDonald's, folks wanting to go straight down with a tractor-trailer delivering on a Saturday, I just don't see that there's enough room. And I just don't know if that's been taken into...
Right, I think that's something that we could look at further. I will say that the volumes, the actual traffic volumes, they did account at the intersection. That does capture everybody entering the site, again, before the Wawa. That's the existing condition, right? And that is the basis of the volumes, and then you build on that with the projected volumes for the future. And they looked at Saturday, they looked at the weekday AM, the weekday PM, peak hour, and Saturday midday. I hear what you're saying, those are concerns that I think that we could, should, look at further to see if there's additional changes that could be made with the site layout or other related improvements to essentially, you know, ensure the best internal circulation possible. We've, we've taken a step, you know, from their initial submission, made some recommendations, they've made some changes. But that is a bit of an iterative process that will continue into land development. So that's something to ask that we could look at further.
So my last question, do you feel that the McDonald's, the Wawa, the gas station, and half of the shopping center all will sufficiently be a appropriate scheme of things for this lot of ground? You feel like?
I'm going to just object, as long as it's telling you a traffic perspective in terms of whether you feel like there's a circulation pattern, or just to say that?
Well, I guess that's, I apologize, that's, I guess that's what I'm getting at. Do you feel that there's enough circulation with, with all of those things being taken into consideration? A Wawa, a gas station, a McDonald's, and a half of a shopping center?
They're, again, just kind of based on what they will have to do in terms of the site layout, recommendations, the intersection improvements. They, they need to show that it works. And in the initial traffic study, it appears that it will. They need to make some revisions, and we'll revisit that once it's resubmitted. I can't say as far as if it's appropriate or not. I can just say that based on the analysis and the volume data and the capacity analysis, that's what we're, from the traffic engineering side of things, that's what we're looking at, as well as some of the site layout, the circulation, the vehicle and pedestrian access. If a Wawa were to come in here, our goal is to make that as safe and, you know, as best as possible.
Is that all, is that all for you, Mr. Parker? Any other parties?
My name is Terrell Aurora. I'm part owner of Aurora State's LC on 851 South High Street. As Sean pointed out, that there was a safety concern or was a conflict in order to get to McDonald's parking lot. Do you believe that there is a safety or conflict getting out of the parking? Do you believe that there is a safety or conflict getting out of the parking lot if they want to take a left on South High Street?
There, that is, yeah, that's something that's potentially a concern. If you're coming around the McDonald's drive-through for, yes, if you're coming around behind the McDonald's and you want to get out and make a left to go south on High Street, that's what you're talking about?
Well, I was referring to the parking on the south side first.
Oh, sure, that too. So the parking on the south side, yes, again, that's something that if you were parked there and you wanted to get into the left lane to make a left to go south on High Street, you're, potentially, there would be a queue of vehicles that you will have to merge into to do that. It's a concern, but I keep in mind that for the most part, that is not a, like, high-speed traffic moving. That's traffic waiting for the light to turn green so that they can go. It is something that exists to some extent today that may become more difficult as more traffic is coming out of the shopping center. I don't have an answer exactly for what should or could be done about that, other than it's something that we'll continue to look at and see if we can come up with a solution.
Okay. And you also pointed out the drive-through exit.
Yes.
Do you think there's also a conflict there if they want to take a left?
It could be, and there could be some things that can be done to try to create an open space for them to get into. Paving markings and so forth, like it's do-not-block area. Try to keep that clear for traffic coming out of the drive-through. Again, that's something that's out there today that, again, may become more of an issue with more traffic coming out of the shopping center.
Now, given that the exit for drive-through is difficult, the parking lot for McDonald's is also difficult. Now, we're going to have Wawa also, customers come out. Do you believe one lane can build a lot of traffic in the plaza up to the middle of that whole shopping center and not create some sort of chaos because there's only one lane that exits through the whole center?
Right, yes. That's what the data is showing, because I will say that I think that that queue is going to clear out as every time they get a green light, that traffic will clear out from the shopping center driveway onto High Street. Then the light will turn red, there will be traffic that builds up in that queue again. And again, based on the analysis that they provided with the volumes and so on and so forth, that queue should clear out every time and it is not anticipated to go all the way back into the shopping center, you know, where the Wawa traffic comes out or back into the back part of the shopping center.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Any other party that have questions for this witness? Please take the microphone and just state your name again.
Yeah, good evening. Ed and I are three yards down the avenue. Mr. Parker, real quick, regarding grading of the intersection or level of service, currently it's an A, the projection is to go to a B. And if I'm going to do test scores, a 100 is an A, to a 90, right? 89 to 80 is a B. Where does it fit into the B?
Where does it fit into B?
Yeah, in the projection.
For a signalized intersection, I'm just trying to see if they have-
Is it closer to A or is it closer to C or?
A B, oh, where does their B fit?
Yeah.
Okay, I can tell you, again, this is based on what they've submitted so far-
Right.
And, which may change. They're closer to an A. Their future level of service for all three peak hours is B or better. And it is, in the AM peak hour, it's 11.6 seconds. The difference between level service A, so level service A goes from an average, average overall delay for the intersection for any driver. The average delay is zero to 10 seconds for level service A. Level service B starts at 10 seconds. So their delay in the AM peak hour is 11.6 seconds. So something to keep in mind here is that that delay incorporates traffic on High Street. And given that there's two, three lanes in each direction on High Street, there's a good amount of available capacity for the overall intersection. So the delay and the level service coming out of the shopping center may, on that approach, may be worse than level service B. But the overall intersection is the level service B or better.
Okay. Regarding counts, earlier in the meeting you had mentioned existing counts. Are existing counts, are they manual counts? Is that the same thing when we count?
They're, yes, I mean, some are done by video and they convert that to turn movement.
All right, so when we get into peak hours, can you just confirm to us what the PM peak hours are when these counts are being done?
Generally speaking, they are 3 to 6 PM. I think the period from 3 PM to 6 PM is counted. And then the highest hour of that, which could be, let's say, 4:15 to 5:15, that is the peak hour that's used in the study. I'm not certain off the top of my head what the peak period that was counted, but I-
I thought I saw 3 to 4, but maybe I have to look at the report again.
But the overall count would have been done for more than just one hour. It would have been like a three-hour time period. And then they take the highest volume hour of that period and that's what they use as the basis.
Okay. The data is important, and I just want to confirm this. I mean, if we have a manual count, that's the real-world number today, and then we have the business case or the business model from Wawa, they know what the counts of cars are going to go in there. So if those existing counts are off, then the future counts are off also. Is that correct?
I mean, yes, if existing counts are off, I'm not sure what you mean by off.
Well, if I have a business case and I count 10 cars and 10 cars equals 10 times revenue, right? People coming in the door. If I'm guessing, it's five or 10. I mean, it all starts with a number, right?
You mean for the projected trips for the-
Yeah, and it's the business case too at the end of the day. So what it's leading me to, and are you familiar with the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission? Down on Market Street?
Yes.
And I don't know, data's great, and they have a report, but it's from 2019, okay? And that was the corridor from 926 to the, I guess we'd call it the Beaumont Bridge or something like that. And they include Parkway Shopping Center in there. So I don't know, are they associated with PennDOT or is that-
DVRPC is like a regional metropolitan planning organization?
Yeah, yeah. Has anybody looked at numbers there to see what they have? I mean, I know it's a 2019 report, but it's, it also has projections based on West Town and West Ocean with the, you know, growth rate, okay, which is the traffic will increase. But it takes it all the way out to 2045. And it rates the intersections and stuff like that. And what I'm just trying to say is, there's more data out there. But, you know, and I was just curious if you're familiar with it. Do you guys utilize any of that or you just, do we just go to PennDOT and?
Well, I mean, the applicant provides the data for this study. They did the traffic counts and that's all contained in the study. They're not taking count data from DVRPC from 2019. That's more of a bigger-picture, regional improvements type of a thing, not specific to this individual site. I heard that, I heard what you said, that Parkway was included in that-
Yes.
In those projections, but, yeah, that's not kind of how these studies are done for individual-
Yeah, I guess, I guess my point is to the board too, just because PennDOT comes back and says something doesn't. You know, I don't take it negative, it's right.
Yeah, can we ask a question of the witness?
You know.
Public comment here.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Any other parties have questions for this witness? Do you want to give the report or break through to the next one?
Yeah, and I just wanted to check in, because I believe the township has one more witness to call. And I want to see if they want to see this through tonight. Yes. Would you like a five-minute break? Okay, we'll take five minutes. Okay, we're going to get back into it now. I believe the township has one more witness to call. And we're going to shoot for a cutoff time of 8:30. It's 7, almost 7:50 now. We're going to try and wrap this up by 8:30. So would you like to call our next witness?
Hi, Ms. Chair, the next witness and the final witness for the township is the Chief of Police, Michael Carroll.
Good, ready? These were the testimony you got to provide. Be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth that we got to show you affirm.
Does the board have any questions for the chief?
So the items, Chief Carroll, the items that I would like you to just kind of maybe give an overview for the board are, the traffic data in this location, accident, things of that nature based on the police department's records, as well as potentially calls for service associated with this kind of or similar use in the township.
Which would you like to hear first?
Why don't we start with, since we've been on traffic, why don't we start with traffic first?
So I have a list of all of the accidents, not just at the signalized intersection but along that area from 2016 until September 21st of this year. Both reportable and nonreportable. So in '23, there were three accidents in that area, one of which was reportable this year up until September. In 2022, there were six accidents in that area, all of which were reportable. But I'm saying, so of those six accidents, I think only one was in the intersection. The other, there were, three of them were caused by U-turns. Twenty twenty, there was one accident about the year. Twenty-one, there were six accidents, three of which were nonreportable, three were reportable. And two of those had to do with the off-ramp. Twenty nineteen, there were two accidents, one reportable, one nonreportable. And one of those had to do with the off-ramp. Twenty eighteen, there were three accidents, all three reportable. One had to do with the off-ramp. Which could be two had to do with the off, with the off-ramp. Twenty seventeen, there were five accidents, four of which were reportable. And. One was in the parking lot, the nonreportable was in the parking lot of McDonald's. One had to do with the off-ramp, one had to do with the down at the bridge. The overpass of two oh two and South High Street. In twenty sixteen, there were three accidents, all three of which were reportable. And one of those, one had to do with the off-ramp, the other two were in the area of the bridge.
The ones that had to do with the off-ramp, I'm assuming generally they're like rear-ending and things like that?
They're rear-ending and they're U-turns from the ramp.
Okay.
Trying to turn and go south when they go off the off-ramp.
Okay. Taking correct answers.
That's correct.
Now, in terms of, does any one on the board have questions for Chief Carroll related to the traffic data that he just provided?
Yeah, I do. These, the area that you're citing that had all these accidents you just recited, what, what area are we talking about along High Street? Is it just at the intersection or is it beyond the intersection but going north as well as south?
Both north and south.
How far are we talking from the intersection? Hundred feet, two hundred feet?
I don't have the feet, so generally it would be north of the overpass of two oh two. And south, they would all be south of Spruce and mostly in the area of Lexington and South.
So would you say it's between the streets of Lexington and Yorktown?
No, that there would be bigger than that.
Would be larger than that? How much larger?
From the overpass, which is south.
Only from there, okay. Now, you said that there was six or was there five accidents that occurred in twenty twenty-two?
Twenty-two. It's five, plus it's six, it's five.
So there were five reportable accidents within, that was within a twelve-month continuous period?
Yes, from April of twenty-two to the end of the year, till twelve twenty-eight.
And those are all what you would be calling as reportable?
Yes.
There was some discussion about reportable versus, the term we used, correctable crashes. How would you delineate any of those five actions which occurs being correctable or not?
So, reportable, nonreportable is what we, how we determine accidents. If they're reportable, they're reportable if someone is injured or whether they need medical attention or whether the vehicle has to be towed as a result of damage from the accident. The correctable is something that we don't generally deal with.
All right, so that's something you're gonna talk about. Do you have a list of all those that you just recited, Chief Carroll? Can we include this as an exhibit in our document?
Well, it's not a board exhibit, it's a township exhibit. There's a difference between board exhibit and township exhibit. So if Chief wants to mark it as township exhibit, the data that he's provided, you know, she has not the opportunity to object to that. That's not a board exhibit.
Well, I'm just requesting we could have it as per consideration for the board.
Chief, would you be willing to enter that as a township exhibit?
Sure, well, I have a couple of versions here. One has a bunch of my notes on it and one is much clearer.
We'll take the clearer one, please.
So we can, Chief, mark that as township exhibit one.
Um.
We don't have any objection, I would just like a copy of what you have.
If you want a copy, you're welcome to.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we need to make copies instead of direct. I have, we're nice helping. Mark it now.
So that'll be exhibit T one.
I have no further questions right now.
I have questions, so.
Your definition of reportable, is it different than the definition of Mr. Parker gave?
No, I just added in there that, so Mr. Parker, reportable versus injury, we generally interpret that as an injury that requires some medical attention.
Okay, so you're using the same definition? Okay, thank you.
Does any other member of the board have? Any questions for Chief Carroll?
On accidents or some other topic?
On the traffic information and on the calls for service.
Well, just to follow up, then, all the, all those that are listed as reportable, they also would be listed to pendant as being reportable as well, is that correct?
That's correct.
Right? Thank you.
So Chief, did you go over calls for service for this type of use or similar use within the township?
So I did look at the calls for service in twenty twenty, for all of twenty twenty-two and all of twenty twenty-three at our four current Wawa's. So just going down them in twenty twenty-two. So the, the calls are broken down, all of our Wawa's get extra patrols, just to try and keep crimes and disturbances to a minimum. So I broke out the extra patrols from each of the locations. So in twenty twenty-two, Two East Roads Avenue had twenty eight calls for service.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Two East Roads Avenue Wawa had twenty eight calls for service, that we were summoning there. Seven oh six East Gay Street Wawa at one hundred fifty-one. Ten fifty West Chester Pike at seventy-nine. And Pottstown Pike Wawa, ten ninety-five Pottstown Pike Wawa at seventy. In twenty twenty-three, Two East Roads Avenue had twenty-nine calls for service. Gay Street Wawa, strangely enough, had the exact same number, one hundred fifty-one calls for service. West Chester Pike had seventy-five calls for service. Pottstown Pike Wawa had forty calls for service. And in comparison, I, I took the McQuarrie Inn, which is kind of a busy area down on South High Street. They had fifty calls for service in twenty-two and seventy-nine calls for service in twenty-three. And the Parkway Center as a whole had forty-three calls for service in twenty twenty-two and forty-five calls for service in twenty twenty-three.
And Chief, a call for service does not necessarily mean that a crime has been committed, correct?
That's correct, it's anything, could be a keys lock, could be anything.
Does anyone have a question for the chief related to calls for service?
Yeah, Chief, I have a question for you. So as part of our budget preparation, we looked at the growth in the township, whether it's Woodlands of Greystone or changing commercial uses or potential additional Wawa. And we, we identified the fact that calls for service are increasing and are projected to increase and that justify additional resources for the police department, is that correct?
Yes.
As part of managing demand on creative police resources, have you found that the use of license plate reader technology at key intersections has both helped deter and aid the police department in resolving matters of concern, whether that be stolen vehicle or other issues that might be arising related to calls for service?
Yes, the RLPR system has both, has given us additional information, both proactively and reactively, to head off crimes, stop crimes and investigate crime after the fact.
And do you think that a signalized intersection for a Wawa would be an ideal point for a license plate reader?
Would be a good spot.
And would you believe that that should be something that the, should this be approved, should be part of a conditional requirement for approval?
So I don't know the rules on conditional requirements, but I would love an LPR there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Question, Mike, would you say if crimes, the numbers you were giving us here, would a majority of the type of crimes that you're seeing?
So those calls for service, they, they run the gamut. The crime, generally any crime that occurs at a Wawa is usually death-related. There's a number of disturbances and asking people to leave, but those are probably most serious crimes.
Okay, thanks.
Chief, is it possible that with the closing of McQuarrie Inn, the crime in that area could even go down?
I don't project a lot, but if McQuarrie Inn closes, crime's gonna go down there. Okay, thank you.
But generally, Chief, when there's a convenience store like a Wawa that moves into a shopping center, just, does that tend to attract crime?
So it attracts people and people create crimes.
It's getting directed.
Ma'am Chair, can I just follow up a question related to the LPRs?
Yes.
Do we currently have LPRs at the signalized intersections of Five Points and West Chester Pike or Pottstown Pike and Green Road?
Both.
Okay, thank you.
And are they installed by us?
I mean, are they installed by the township?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for the chief on the board? Is there another topic you wanted to cover?
No, those were the, no, ma'am Chair, those were the two items that I asked the chief to drop.
Okay. Just give me the numbers again.
Chief, I'm sorry, do you use the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me? Okay. The numbers again, I believe for the existing Wawa that's right north of the proposed Wawa, that this store is gonna be obviously relocating that one. I think you gave the numbers, I caught one of them was twenty-nine and I didn't catch the.
Twenty-eight in twenty twenty-two and twenty-nine in twenty twenty-two.
Okay. And, and when you say calls for service again, they're not necessarily all crime-related. Some of them, as you indicated, are people lock their keys out of their cars or other incidents like that.
Most of them are not crime-related.
Okay. Do you happen to know whether there have been any accidents that crashed down that you, that you provided, whether any of those accidents were directly on the site at the, the existing Wawa on High Street?
I don't have that information.
Okay. Are you familiar with that location?
I am.
Okay, are you, have you found there to be issues with circulation within that existing location?
With the amount of cars that pull in there, it's not allowed, there's not allowed parking yet, it's right in and out. So yes, there are problems with circulation.
That's all the questions I have.
Do any of the other parties have questions for the chief based on his testimony? Okay. So what we'll do now?
Turn this on, thank you, Chief. And you said you don't have any objections to the admission of exhibit T one, Debbie, is that correct? So what I'll do is I'll circulate this to the board, so you'll have it, and I'll make Debbie a copy as well. And all the parties actually. So next, the next process is to allow the parties to present evidence. So I'm gonna just go down the list, you're gonna come up and be sworn in by the court reporter and provide whatever testimony or evidence that you intend to do, okay? Mr. Dial, will you read one? Yeah? Okay. Mr. De Sidero? Is he here? Ms. Kramer? Ms. Pritchett? Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Ms. De Betty? Can you help me presenting evidence? Okay. Mr. Markey, is he here? Mr. Crump?
Good, Gregor. Please square the testimony you're about to provide, be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. So help you God, I'll show you a firm.
I do.
Can you spell your last name for me?
I want to see, are you?
Thank you.
Okay. Now, thank you for having me, hopefully I can add something to this discussion. We've talked for a couple of digit hours now. So hopefully my intent is to add some different residents' perspective. I live at Nine Rock Town Avenue, which is the street directly opposite the shopping center. Thank you.
You did speak into the microphone, ma'am Chair.
Sure.
Thank you.
I must have to bend down.
You can pull it out. Yeah.
I don't think it gives up that's longer.
Okay, that's better. I just, the kind of first thing I want to present is the, actually a section of the zoning code that both Supervisor Elman and Supervisor Omen read tonight about the burden of the applicant to present a scheme that is, does not, that sufficiently prevents adverse traffic impacts caused by proposed use on the surrounding community. So that's section eighty-four seventy-five, I think you know that. If we could advance to the next slide, please.
Did you want, let's mark these all, Crump, exhibit one?
Yeah, that's great.
We'll have to get a copy of the slideshow. Okay, good.
Yeah, and you can just advance. And one of my concerns, I think we've kind of talked about the volume of traffic. I think that's still a little bit of dispute here about what's being added by Wawa. But one of my concerns is about, one of the things I noticed when I looked at the plan was the actual number of access points to a public way. And I want, just in this scheme, you're well aware that it's just one really, one way in and one way out of the Parkway Shopping Center as it is now. I want to know a little more about other Wawa's and how they function. So I did a aerial, a survey of aerial photographs of forty Wawa's that are closest to the one nine three eight two zip code. And that's kind of the exhibit you see on the screen here. To the gray, kind of, they're forty gray squares, each one represents a different Wawa store. And I just, they're not any particular Wawa's, they're just the closest ones according to Wawa's website. You can go in and kind of search according to zip, you know, proximity to one nine three eight two. So I clicked all of those here and I looked at each one and the number in each of these represents the number of discrete ways in and out of a Wawa store to a public right of way. Okay, so this includes Wawa's that serve gas. It includes Wawa's that don't, includes Wawa's that are in standalone buildings on their own piece of property. And it also includes Wawa's near the shopping center. So it's just like a total kind of broad, broad brush grab of forty closest Wawa's to one nine three eight two. So you see each of these has a number, and the number represents, like I said, the number of discrete ways in and out of each property. And you'll see in some that there's a plus sign, which means that I, means that you can, the plus sign includes ways in and out that go through adjacent property. So like on Five Points, Wawa, you have two discrete ways in and out, one onto Route three and one onto Five Points. But you can also go through the CVS, I think it is, shopping center. And you can actually go beyond that to the bank too, because they're all connected there. So that actually will be a, that, in this diagram, that's represented by a two plus, because there are two discrete ways in and out, one onto Five Points, one onto Route three. But there are additional ways to go out to public rights of way. And this matters. So if you could go to the next, yeah, go to the next slide, please. So just to remind you, there's really only one discrete way in and out of this proposed Wawa. And that, the problem with that is that it actually concentrates the impact of the traffic on the surrounding community, multiple ways in and out. Like the other Wawa's that you saw on the previous slide, they actually distribute or diffuse the traffic impact on the community. This Wawa, as proposed, would actually concentrate it. And I think we've heard a lot about how much, how greater it is, like the improvement that it's making, but it's actually funneling the traffic and making a more dramatic impact. So I want to kind of bring, I really want you to see these two kind of, the discrepancy between the Wawa's that are currently existing and what's actually being proposed. There's a, it's an, this is an anomaly because of the way the traffic is being treated as one way in and one way out. If you can advance, please. And also to share some kind of firsthand observations of the traffic patterns here in the kind of area. As I said, I live on Yorktown and I work in West Chester, so in the mornings I make a left-hand turn onto High Street, which you see, kind of a blue arrow. Some things to note here is that there's a fence at kind of one Yorktown Avenue. And it's actually very difficult to see left oncoming traffic from North High Street in addition to traffic that's coming out of Parkway, traffic that's coming north and south. You're also looking out for traffic coming down the ramp. And trying to time your kind of jump across High Street to miss all of those vehicles. As I think Joe pointed out, there is a speed problem here. Not only do we have speeding coming north, but also south too. And it can be kind of, it's very, as I said, it's very dicey to get across there. And because of the short distance between the intersection of Yorktown and High Street and the Parkway Center and High Street, it's actually very difficult to get your car straight when you're making a left-hand turn. You can actually get all the way over into the lane at this point. And as new and kind of more traffic is introduced into High Street from making a left out of the Parkway, as a result of the Wawa development. the Parkway as a result of the Wawa development, I foresee it becoming an even more problematic intersection. And I think that we would expect to see more accidents occurring as residents are trying to leave Yorktown Avenue and make a left. Please advance. And actually, the same is true if, for instance, I'm coming home off the off-ramp. Now here, I'm crossing one, two, three, four lanes of traffic to get into my neighborhood. It's, it's hard now, especially kind of looking south, back of your shoulder. Now I'm seeing, actually, the traffic report said that a majority of the kind of traffic to this Wawa will be coming from South High Street. So I would conceivably be in conflict with that, and frankly, any traffic that is trying to get into the shopping center as a result of the draw of Wawa. If you could advance one more. So as I said, I think, in my opinion, this proposal as it is does not sufficiently mitigate the adverse effects of the traffic on the surrounding property, so I think it should be denied. But if there is not legal ground for you to do so, I guess I'm proposing a solution here that I think might work. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I, just my observation of traffic patterns here is that we should actually abandon the intersection of Parkway and High Street and require the applicant to move the intersection to opposite Yorktown to give us a chance of actually getting in and out of our neighborhood. I think that the whole intersection could be signalized, including the off-ramp, so each, each kind of vector of traffic got a chance to kind of move through. And with that, I would give a dedicated left turn arrow to Yorktown Avenue so we could actually make a safe turn, safe left turn onto High Street to go to Westchester. Now, it's, the houses on Yorktown can't be moved, but Wawa and the owner of the shopping center have shown a will to kind of demolish part of the shopping center to make something better. It's a parking lot now, frankly, a blank slate, so the entrance can really be put anywhere that we think it's, does minimal impact on the surrounding properties. And there's certainly precedence for this, in the way that entrance to West Goshen Shopping Center has been recently modified by the supervisors in the hearings for the Target and Chick-fil-A. I would also ask the supervisors maintain a, I think the entrance kind of closer to the off-ramp makes more sense because the surface traffic can really peel out of the entrance exit drive to get around to the back of the shopping center. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you mark all of that as Crum one? No. Have a copy, we'll make sure.
And I have two questions. Do you happen to know how many of those 40 Wawa's on your first sheet have signalized intersections?
I don't, no.
And your testimony this evening is based on your personal opinions and not based on any professional traffic engineering experience, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
That's all I have, thanks.
What's your first name?
Travis, T R A B I S.
Does the Board have any questions for Mr. Travis? Mr. Crum, sorry, Mr. Travis.
No, I don't. Do you, do you have any questions?
I have a question. We have actually the existing vision, it's like a few slides perhaps. Is this one, yeah? So today, when you exit from Yorktown, are you typically having to wait until High Street traffic stops at a red signal and then pull across the road quickly before the exiting traffic from Parkway Shopping Center turns left in this scenario and goes south? Is that typically how you get out of there, or do you, can you routinely pull out left even when there's a green light for High Street?
I typically wait till there is a, what happens is, I wait until there's actually a red light on High Street, and then I allow, then I let the traffic from Parkway come through, make a left, and then I try to get in between, behind the cars that are coming north on High Street, and I'm not always successful doing that because sometimes they're actually backed up, like, if they're more than too deep, because of the limited distance between Parkway and Yorktown, I can't get out, like, there's not a lot of room in the lane going north for me to get, so I have to wait like a whole other cycle to get through the intersection. You know, so that goes on, frequently you have to like pull out a little bit, and then actually back up because of just the velocity of traffic coming.
So you pull out so you get a better sight line?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
And if you don't make it, you better back up again because of traffic started, right? How often, is that half the time that happens?
Well, I would say, yeah, that's how, maybe.
Thank you.
Any other board?
No.
Thank you.
Any other parties have questions, Mr. Crum?
And there's a couple, a couple more parties. Mr. Mrs. Hartman? Mr. Dumey? Am I saying that right? And then Mr. Mayer? Okay, okay. So that, and, and, oh, sorry, Debbie, did I ask you if you have any objection to admission of Mr. Crum's exhibits?
I do not.
Okay, but so they will be admitted. So we have all of the, I think, we didn't, I knew for the board exhibits, B1 through B11, your exhibits were A1 through A26, we had one township exhibit, and then we have Mr. Crum's slideshow with Crum 1. So those are all of the exhibits, they will all be admitted. The evidentiary portion of the hearing is closed, is there anybody else in the audience who's just a resident who wants to have their voice be heard by the Board? Just state your opinion. Please come up.
You don't have to, you don't have to worry.
Name is Douglas Stewart, 1125 Windsor Drive. I'm here as a private citizen, but I'm also the planning commission chairman. And planning commission voted to recommend denial for the conditional use in, I wish to make three points. First, we don't believe the improvements on, you know, the road improvements are adequately addressed. The applicant indicated that PENDOT would be taking the issue of, the planning commission believes that they should be completed, the improvement design should be completed before the conditional use is approved. There were several, the second point was that there were several residents that expressed concerns over noise, lighting, and traffic, and the applicant did not adequately address those points in the opinion of the planning commission. The third point was actually not part of our recommendation, but there was a lot of discussion about the fact that the applicant has not addressed anything on how to assimilate Wawa to the rest of the shopping center, that you can't view this application in a vacuum, it has to be coordinated with the design of the rest of the shopping center. Those are the three points that I'd like to make.
Anybody else think there's a resident who want to make a comment?
So the evidentiary portion of the hearing is closed, and the Board has 45 days to render a decision. Forty-five days from tonight takes you to March 15th. The Board has a meeting on March 19th, so I'm asking Debbie if she would agree to an extension of four days. Okay, so we will have a decision to, for the Board to consider at their March 19th meeting, which starts at 6:00 PM. So nothing further will happen until that time, and that closes this hearing. So thank you, everybody.
The Board wants to be aware of the fact of the law.
It's always helpful.
That of law.
Always helpful. Sure, always helpful.
Do you want to know where you'd like that meeting to be for consideration?
I mean, I think at least by the February meeting, which would be the second February meeting, February 20th. Thank you for offering. So what Ms. Shulsky has just offered to do, when the Board writes a written decision, it has findings of fact, which is based on the evidence presented, conclusions of law, and then she would do a proposed order for the Board's consideration. That's not something that the Board, we, we prepare that already for the Board. But if anyone, anybody else wants to do that as a party, you're given that opportunity to do that. So you're allowed to put something in writing that is based on, that the evidence that was presented, on how you believe the Board should make a decision. And if anybody needs, obviously I realize the parties, other parties are not represented, if you need me to give you an example of ones that have been submitted in the past so you can see what it looks like, I'm happy to do that, so just get in touch with me. Okay, everybody has my email because I've been emailing you throughout the hearing. So thank you.